Boy, it leveled you down. It leveled the field that didn't. It rained. It leveled you. Field up there, would you be able to do that? Or did you drive?
No, I filled it.
Okay.
I filled it.
Out of, um, out of thirteen bitters on low generator packages, we had one bitter. Two. Thirteen. But our team had one guy coming. We got a thousand dollars left. Thousand, thirty-three dollars he's definitely. Thanks for your guys. Somebody's spending. Yeah, spending on some.
Good morning. This is Monday, May the tenth, twenty twenty-one. It's ten o'clock and, uh, this is a regular commissioner court and we're gonna go ahead and get started. Uh, but first, before we get started, we're gonna ask Brother Harry, uh, McGlyndon, uh, pastor of Jesus Christ, come to the church.
Yes.
Open us up in prayer.
Our Father in heaven, we come this morning giving thanks and glory to you for all things. We actually get blessed today, oh my Father, but we actually look down upon it and have divine mercy. Keep us, Lord, keep us safe, oh my God. We need you in times like these, you know. For what the spirit upon each and every one of us, the one that's here and the one that's not here. For my Father, we come, Lord, praising you, giving you the praise, Lord, for welcoming this morning. For giving us a mind to want to pray, we wanna see you, Lord God. We ask you to bless today, Lord, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, I will call the meeting to order. Uh, we do have a forum acknowledging the guests that's here today and appreciate y'all coming back. Uh, we first have the consent agenda and the commissioner, if y'all look over that and if you have any questions, uh, be so and open America.
I make it, Mr. Go on.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Bomby, second by Mr. White, that we, uh, accept the consent agenda as presented. Uh, no discussions, all in favor? Five oh. Okay, to deliberate and consider action on the following items. Uh, number one, discuss if appropriate approved monthly monitoring contract between Newton County and Fire Patrol for, for the fire alarm system in, at the K building in Burkeville. Uh, this is something that, uh, Fire Patrol had to put in after, uh, we had approved that contract and I'm gonna ask Tommy to, uh, come advise us on what, what went on up there, if you don't mind.
So we've been in the fire system, Burkeville, uh, and finally got it operating and now it's ready to start monitoring.
He's put one in the back.
Okay, I hear a motion.
I make it, Mike.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Bomby and second by Mr. Thompson, that, uh, we approve the monitoring contract between Newton County and Fire Patrol Fire Alarm System at the K building for three hundred fifty dollars a year additional money. Uh, is there any discussion?
It's gonna be thirty-six or sixty months on your contract. Is it gonna be a three-year or five-year contract?
It'd be a three-year. Any more discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Number two, discuss an appropriate approved canvas of May the first, twenty twenty-one, special election of Newton County Mercy Service District Number Two Trout Creek Volunteer Fire Department. Mr. Duckworth.
Yes, Judge. Um, this was a, a local election that, uh, the county didn't actually have to call, the EFC called it. Uh, and what they basically wanted to do was just extend their service area and it's, it's an area that they're already providing, uh, our service to, but they don't pay the fire tax. So it's mostly San Jack area. So they called an election and actually conducted it on May the first and they submitted their results and we need to make the court approve and accept those results.
Did you get a file on that?
Yeah, I filed on that.
Can they do that? Can they do that?
Yes.
That's no mainline.
That's why you have to have an election for it, but actual people that live in the area that they're proposing has actually gotta vote either yes or no for it.
Did they do their due diligence without notifying the other fire departments and making sure that that was something that they all agreed on?
These are, this is the area that they already service. They just don't pay the, the fire tax for it. So that's what they were basically doing.
What they, what they took, they said was, uh, part of, of, bomber was sponsored and they thought it was just a system then.
Yeah.
Now they were already paying it as a sponsor, bomber here is not an EFC, so they had to, you know, step back and allow the other EFCs. Bomber is supposed to follow their fire form, they're not an EFC sponsor.
I just got some phone calls about that. It was two feet kind of. I'm not sure about that.
Is it, is it, is it something that's open to public, uh, postage or anything?
Yes, it was ran in the newspaper and posted yesterday. Now, when, uh, I talked to the state about it because I was, this is something that we don't normally do and I've never dealt with this kind of election. Um, and I was advised that because it is already an established EFC, that is something that they conduct their own election for. The county does not and is not obligated to actually do that for them. Cause I thought that we would have to, you know, do like we always do, bring in the commissioner of court and everything and the attorney with state to know that this is something that is already established, so they would do their own election. But we do need to have the results and stuff canvassed through the court and have y'all conduct it so we can get with the appraisal district and Melissa's office for tax.
Or public knowledge, uh, what was the result?
Uh, it was twenty-four, four and zero against, so we had twenty-four people voted.
If they was all already in their district anyway, why did they have to do that? Why did they do that?
You have to do it because they're not paying the tax on it. And for them to actually start paying the tax on it, they had to have a local election for it. The, the people have to vote to pay the tax.
Okay. So there's a boundary that has to be drawn for that?
They submitted their map, um, that provided their service area and then where they're extending it. And my office, this, this has been a, a real work in progress, but we worked very closely with that call trying to make sure with the areas, so we would not allow people that were not eligible to vote, vote either for or against this, so.
Did it have to be the people from that area or, so, so those, those people?
Yes, and it could not be the people that were already in the area that were paying the tax.
I just need to get my, I just need to get my story straight.
Well, we, we questioned a lot and like I said, we worked really close with that call trying to, because the boundaries, it, it's kinda hard when it's not voting boxes that are established. I mean, you know, you can pretty much follow the highway with this, it's a little bit different. So, um, we had to get with that call to try to help us with some ad races. So we, we narrowed it down as, as close as we could.
So the, only the people that, that we were trying to include, you have to vote?
Right.
Not the ones that is already established?
Right. Because all they were voting for is to either pay the tax or not pay the tax.
Okay, and, and the results is twenty-four to zero.
Right, twenty-four to zero, so it's law.
How many residents did they include?
It would have been, it was less than a hundred. I don't have an approximate, but, I mean, and I feel like, I don't know if we ever have an approximate, but kinda.
Twenty-five percent voted.
And of course they.
Which is pretty good.
Waited their petition before he knew anything for their war, definitely.
I make the motion.
I second the motion.
Motion been made by Mr. Benson, second by Mr. White, that we approve the canvas of May the first, twenty twenty-one, special election for Newton County Mercy Service District Number Two. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Five oh.
Thank you.
Number three, is discussing appropriate approved of payment for rent for temporary office building for precinct two. Commissioner White.
Okay, uh, Judge, fellow commissioners, uh, as you all aware, I hired a secretary, uh, mid-March and we had, did not have a appropriate office to put her in. Uh, and so we had to get somewhere to house her and myself until we get our new shop built. And so I have a ten-by-twenty-six portable building and, uh, we, uh, gonna rent it until we get in our, our new home. So we, uh, need to, uh, pay the, the, uh, person that, that, uh, person that supplied the portable building.
Is it gonna be there at your old location or?
Yeah, just at the old location right now, yeah. Yeah, we have a place in it for my, my desk and my secretary and we have a small bathroom and it's a nice.
Well, whose budget is coming out of?
It'll be out of mine. Actually, it'll be part of the, uh, new, new building. So.
Okay. I make that motion.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Bomby and second by Mr. Thompson, that we approve the payment for rent for the temporary office building for precinct two. Uh, any discussion? Uh, all in favor? Five oh.
Thank you.
Uh, number four, discuss an appropriate approved the change of private road fifty twenty-seven back to a county road requested by owner. Um, Commissioner White?
Okay, uh, Judge, fellow commissioners, I have, uh, here in the audience with us today, Mr. Roy Hopper and, uh, he has with him is Nancy, uh, Nick Kristen. And, uh, Roy has a twenty acre, uh, twenty-plus acres with a cabin on it, uh, off of the, uh, Wee Chapp Road north, uh, northwest Portoma County, my precinct. And, uh, back in nineteen ninety-nine, uh, that road was, uh, changed. Uh, I talked with commis-, former Commissioner Gill and he informed me that he were, it was requested that it be changed to a private road. And that road was, uh, County Road ten sixty-eight. I'll have a little drawing there, uh, for each of you, but, uh, and he, they publicized it and changed it and, uh, there never was any protest against it. So for a long time, it was considered private road fifty twenty-seven. But as we, uh, find out, uh, as, as Mr. Harper, he's in the process of trying to sell his property and the cabinet, cabin and, uh, it's running into some difficulties because there's no access according to, uh, that private road fifty twenty-seven. So he's requesting that we change it back to the original, uh, ten sixty-eight. And, uh, I contacted, uh, Mr. Lord with the nine-one-one and they never did officially change that to a private road. So, uh, we're asking to, uh, change it back to the original ten sixty-eight and it's approximately two tenths of a mile.
Okay, the nine-one-one has never changed it back to a private road. As far as nine-one-one, it's always been, uh, County Road ten sixty-eight?
Yes.
So it went through court that it would change it to a private road?
Well, it never was, uh, recorded as the private road, but it was put on the, um, the map as, uh, I guess it's by phone request.
Now, what I'm asking is, did it ever go through court? Did it get approved that it went through court, that it was changed to a private road?
No. Thomas was trying to find some of his old, uh, records and, and he, he, he never could, uh, find anything where we officially.
They're fine?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, guys, good to be here. It's, uh, I'm always looking, she used to get back to County Woods. This is my, my home and, uh, I enjoy being up here whenever I can. My family has owned, uh, this property continuously and occupied this property since, uh, nineteen sixties. And, uh, I can't tell you the, the good times we've had there all this time, but we've got a fine young family that, uh, has agreed to buy it. And, uh, as Mr. White said, we have the problem of the, of the, uh, private road indication, which not, not, will not allow us to have a sale. I went back and looked at, uh, the county, um, not the records, but, but, but the county said that, uh, a, a property had to be abandoned for three consecutive years in order to be declared a public road. And I can tell you, eighteen sixty-six until presently, we, I have been on that property, uh, often. And, uh, in fact, that's where I'm going when I leave here today. Uh, I can understand perhaps if somebody took a look at that old road, uh, they might have assumed that it was abandoned because it was in pretty bad shape. In spite of all the, the money that I've spent trying to keep it up, uh, the rains did their job on it and so, um, uh, I, I've got a four-wheel drive truck and I just went right over in there. But let me assure you that, uh, that property has been in continuous use, uh, since that time, uh, as a residence. Uh, I'm an architect, I've done a huge amount of work up here, I've got family and friends. Uh, Mrs. Nicholson and her husband and I had a two-time national championship pie company in Jasper. So all of that caused me to be, uh, up in this part of the world often and that's where, that's where I stay, that's my home. So I can give you more information on these maps which show this, uh, road still is County Road ten sixty-eight, if you'd like to see it. Uh, but, uh, we just request that, uh, that road be allowed to be a county road again and, uh, let us have our road back. Thank you, fellas.
Ms. Courtney, would you address? Ms. Court. See, where the dilemma of the court is in right now.
I think.
If it has never been established to be a private road, it's, it's been continuously been, uh, ten sixty-eight county road, even though it hadn't been maybe, uh, graded, uh, upkeep, or any, any other. So what would be the court's action?
I thought that I understood from you that the court voted, but it was never updated at nine-one-one at that call.
Well, I said it was requested and that's what I got from Mr. Gill. He said it was requested by a, a private.
But he, he, he didn't say it went through the court.
No, he couldn't find his court record, so he couldn't verify that it did go through a court.
So it sounds like it's still a county road, uh, from before and it needs to be put back on your rolls, maintained. Is that your question again?
That, that's my question. But, uh, nine-one-one, uh, has no record of it being a private road. Somewhere had to name it a private road, uh.
It sounds like the previous commissioner just called aside and ordered a new sign for it, but for all intents and purposes, it's still a county road.
Well, as far as the court's decision, it's still a county road.
Right.
Unless records, uh, show different.
Right.
So I, I see no action on this item.
Uh, the only action would be maybe, um.
Take the, take the sign down for the.
Yeah.
County road.
Um, uh, you know, confirming that it's a county road. Um, yeah, I move that it, we confirm that this is county road, whatever, and take any necessary measures to make sure the correct sign is in place and that it's on your road rolls and you're maintaining it. So move, I move that county road, whatever number is.
Reinstated.
Yeah, reinstated and all necessary maintenance done on it.
Okay, I'll make that motion that we, uh, reinstate County Road ten sixty-eight and, uh, change the sign back to coordinate that, reflect that.
I hear a motion. Uh, second.
Second.
Excuse me?
Yes, second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Bomby, that we, uh, recognize, uh, private road fifty twenty-seven as a county road sixty, uh, ten sixty-eight and be reinstated and, uh, remove the private road sign and, and, uh, authorize Mr. White to do whatever necessary to bring it to road standards, county road standards. Any discussion? All, all in favor? Five oh. Is it okay?
Thank you for consideration, folks. Can, can we get, uh, this as a writing for higher records? How?
It, it'd be, it would be in, in the minutes soon as the, uh, county clerk gets through with them and that way you'll have a record of what went on in the commissioner court.
Super.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank y'all. Discussing appropriate approved, uh, purchase of mini track hole for precinct two to Warren Ditchwork. Uh, Mr. White?
Uh, okay, as we continue to get these, uh, monsoon rains every three or four days, my roads are almost in the condition where I can't, I can't put enough covers in, can't keep it up enough, keep them up enough. And I know, one of the biggest issues is not having any ditch digging equipment. We've, uh, we've cut wing ditches and those kind of things, but what happens is that, uh, water build up at the mouth of the cover so, so fast that it can't get through the covers. So we've got to, uh, clean our ditches out and, and, uh, allow the water to get on down the road, down, uh, to the wing ditches and whatnot. The biggest thing is especially during the winter time, the leaves and straw and all that stuff piles up in the ditches. And I have so many that, uh, really just need and customer, the, uh, citizens are calling me weekly complaining about the ditches and, um, all I have so far is a backhoe to do it and backhoe is not a ditch dig, digging apparatus. I think the other three commissioners, if I'm not terribly mistaken, has a, a ditch cleaning, uh, piece of equipment. And, uh, I've talked with other commissioners in, in surrounding counties and the, uh, media is highly recommended by all of them. Said I wouldn't even need a backhoe here once we got a mini trap hole. So, uh, we, we just would need to try and get our ditches in good shape, uh, as we know that, uh, we, we've got to get the water off the roads in order to upkeep the roads. And, um, in a bind in that situation.
Okay, is this a, is this a bid item or is this a?
No. No, I've, I've did some pricing and, uh, there. Forty.
Our, our purchase, uh, policy is if anything over ten thousand to fifty thousand must have three bids. They don't have to be advertised in the papers, is that right, in court?
Yes, forty to forty-five.
Oh, I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm, I'm just making sure.
I understand. I understand. Uh, that's no problem. I just wanted to get the approval to move forward. It's fair on backorder like everything is, is like that. It's May, May, nine, year be over, uh, be back in the, in the winter once again.
Try to buy a new one?
Yes.
Okay, I hear a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and second by Mr. T-, uh, Bomby?
Is the motion to buy one or is to initiate the process for getting the bid, for the auditor office to get the bid or what? What is the motion?
I make it all the way. According to, uh, according to the agenda, i- is to approve the purchase of. So we're, that's not what everybody is in tune with, is a purchase. It, it's going out for bid, am I right?
That's right.
Okay, let's specify that in the motion then, because if you just say so moved, then your move, your motion is what is written on the agenda. So let's reword the motion on it.
Okay.
Does this need to be rewritten or?
We just, as a motion, you just, uh, say approve to go ahead.
Seek, uh, seek bids for the?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, you've started the call, Charlie. Okay, so this already moved and seconded, so whoever moved needs to withdraw their motion and make a new motion. Cause the, the word was already seconded. So withdraw your motion and then make a new motion.
Okay, let me re, withdraw my motion and make a motion to seek bids for a new track hole.
For precinct two. Okay, the motion that was previously on table has been, uh, been, uh, uh, amended or.
Redrawn.
Redrawn, uh, and the motion now stands as going out for bid for mini track hole for precinct number two.
Right.
You still second Mr. Mr. Bomby?
Y'all got it straightened out, yes.
Okay. All right, everybody heard you. Any discussion? All right, everybody heard. End of discussion. Not all in favor? Five votes. Thank the court. Okay, number six is discussing appropriate approve to go out for bid for approximately 12,770 cubic yards of type A text dot specification, two forty-seven base material for fifteen roads, including project 43713, DR 4332, PR 4805, and that's a ninety-ten match on Harvey Grant. So, Mr. Thompson?
Right. That'll be, the county will be reimbursed for the funds, and we'll, I'll use my budget to finance it and probably one month increments, over a period of probably ten months to get the road to work.
Uh, is that type A text dot base material? Is that specified under any?
That was, that was part of that change from gravel to limestone base.
That it's specified as a grade, the type grade A, grade A?
Right.
Instead of B? Or can we alter?
Well, I'm not sure about that.
Where you at, Liz?
So, Mr. James, is that, I wonder if we can just deliver?
That was, that one was approved with Shepherd Road. Or whenever we got the material approved for Shepherd to change from gravel to limestone base, that was in the, that was part of it. That was part of that change.
Okay. We need to make sure, I think those were fine, to make sure we will. But y'all can go ahead. We'll make sure and just have our depth of road to make sure that that was included. But now that you said that, I understand.
Yeah, that part of the roads was part of it, but now we still out for a change on another road.
Okay, the type A and type B is type B don't meet type A and text dot specifications. Only difference is, is there's a little bit more fines in type B than there is type A. But there's a huge difference in price. There's a reason I'm bringing this question up.
Yeah, I think they priced it to us at twenty-seven.
Let's verify, let's verify what that letter says so we don't, so we don't do it wrong.
Okay.
And then you get caught in line.
I think this was copied out of that letter, but I'm not.
Okay, but yeah, just let me make sure. We want to make sure before we go through all this and.
I agree.
So we're having a, you know, our next special or whatever, we can put it back on there, but we can verify that today. So let us make sure before you do it, Mr. James.
Okay.
I mean, it wouldn't go into the paper till next Monday.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm, I'm.
We want to make sure we do it right.
I agree.
All right. I make the motion. Then we table item seven until we get all our details, verifications completed.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and Secretary of Justice, we table item number six. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five votes. Number seven, discussing appropriate approve to put no parking sign along the edge of CR 4123 and Robert Collins property to prevent vehicle from blocking the county, the blocking road construction and creating a hazard to the public. Mr. James?
Yeah, well, I think I'm being told that the state's in litigation on Highway 12 and on the same property, it counters 23 and Highway 12. But we, the constables asked him to move his vehicles. Some of them are not mobile and they're just parked on the side of the road. They're blocking road, and we haven't had any luck trying to get him to move them. So maybe if we put a stop, no parking sign and issue him some citations with the help of the sheriff's department and maybe even the state, maybe we can get him to move them. Either that or we get some funds from him.
Ms. Courtney, is that a legal item that we could, that the court could do?
I do. She. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know right away.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do you hear a motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and Secretary of Justice that we approve of no parking sign along the edge of CR 4123 and Robert Collins property to vent blocking the construction, also a hazard to the public. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five votes. Number eight, consider and adopt the resolution for the Commissioner's Court of Newton County. Texture approving an engagement agreement relating to the bond council service, Ms. Courtney.
You keep it, Courtney. You want to keep?
Oh, no. Okay. So we have Mr. Frills online too, on T. And this is relating to if we end up going out for bonds or certificates of obligations to remodel the prison facility. When Mr. Rosenberg, who we've already contracted with, came out, he said one of the things that we would need would be bond counsel. So he reached out to five or six firms to have them submit a proposal and their qualifications to me. And I did receive those, had a chance to go through them. And there are, I asked that he send some from Houston. He sent several from Houston, several from Austin, but I asked for one from Houston in case they need to come out. They're going to be more willing to and excited to if it's past the drive from Austin. So anyway, I did receive some from Houston and some from Austin. And all of the firms were perfectly qualified and capable of handling it, different price ranges. Some, you know, they, they all charge an initial fee upfront, and then it's based on how much you're trying to borrow. And so the very first firm that submitted a proposal to me, pretty much the day that he, because he copied me on email to a bunch of contacts that he had. And the very first firm that submitted to me was Bracewell, is the name of the firm. They're in Houston, which I wanted somebody from Houston. And it's a firm that I know of and I've heard of, so comfortable with that. And they were kind of in the middle on the price range, not the cheapest, it's not the most expensive, I liked that. And after going through all the qualifications and proposals, that's who I'm recommending, is Bracewell. The attorney that would be our point of contact is Mr. Frills. And this was last minute notice to him, and he already had stuff planned for today, but he asked if he could appear, you know, virtually. So I think that was, that was good. So this is Mr. Frills, and this is recommending Bracewell. So there is a resolution that we approved that was posted with our agenda that, you know, that we're seeking outside counsel to help with this, because that's a specialty thing that's not my specialty. And part of that resolution is an engagement letter that's attached to exhibit A. So it should be in your documents, and it's Mr. Frills. Anybody have any questions? Do you want to say anything, Jonathan?
Courtney, thank you very much. Judge Weeks, members of the court. We really appreciate the opportunity to be before you today and would love to have the opportunity to work with the county and your financing needs. Certainly, if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer them, but we really do appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you today.
Well, thank you for showing your interest and also, any of y'all have questions?
So the way their pricing works is there's an initial minimum fee of 15,000 plus for every thousand dollars that we request, there's a dollar. So let's say we requested 10 million in funds. And we're looking at about 10,000, you know, over the 15, so about 25,000 total. But this, this firm will help us through the, you know, all the requirements, help us with the taxing portion of it. Anything else, Jonathan? Can you just give them a little preview of what y'all do?
Absolutely. So what we do is we help guide you through the entire issuance process. We will prepare all of the documentation that's necessary in order to issue the certificates of obligations. That will include your initial notice of intent, the order authorizing the issuance, the full bond transcript that represents the contract you'll have with the bondholders. We'll take that documentation through the Office of the Attorney General and get approval from the Attorney General's office for it. All bond transactions ultimately have to be approved by the Attorney General. And then we'll take you through closing in connection with that as well. And so we'll assist you with all of that. We'll also review your offering document as it goes out. And the other piece I would just add on our fee, our fee is contingent upon closing. So if you do not close the transaction for some reason, we have every expectation that you will close the transaction. But if for some reason you, you did not, you would not owe us a fee in connection with it. But, but again, we're here to make your life as easy as possible on this. This is our specialty area. And we want to present a transaction in a clean and efficient way and get your funding as quickly as we can.
And I'll add that Jonathan was previously the head of the Attorney General's Public Finance Division. So he's very qualified on that, that portion of it too. But we're, we're excited. So I have the proposals anybody wants to review on, but I took a chance to go through them. This is who I'm recommending. The judge had a chance to review them too. And this is, I feel good about this. So asking you to approve the resolution hiring Bracewell from the service. Right. And also, there's an opportunity to pass a resolution where we can start kind of spending some of that money about 60 days before it actually closes. And Mr. Frills would be able to help with that portion as well, with, you know, the legality behind all of that to get a little advance on some of the money.
Yeah, as you well know, we've already spent a little bit out there already, a little county money. So we can recoup that once this is approved and get this done.
Like I said, this, this firm is kind of middle of the road on, they're all pretty, pretty close on, you know, cost of what they charge. It was all pretty close. This is a little, you know, middle of the road. And I reached out to make sure that I couldn't get any better deals. I knew that the court would want to know, like, could it be any cheaper? Like, could we get them for any better? But, you know, we talked it out, and I think that it's a very fair price for everything that's involved for what they're going to do. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
So you'd be working pretty close with them through all avenues of procedure in which we want to go through?
Yes.
When would our first initial payment to you be?
So the, the payment to me would be from the proceeds of the bond. So you would not pay me until you closed, and then that payment would come from the proceeds of the bond. So there would be no out-of-pocket fees paid to us.
Okay. All right. Any other question? Thank you, Ms. Courtney. Hear a motion?
So move.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and Secretary of Justice, that we approve, adopt the resolution to, for the Commissioner's Court of Newton County to approve the engagement agreement relating, relating to the bond council service. And that would be Mr. Bracewell?
Frill.
So, uh. Any more discussion?
All right.
Not all in favor? Go, Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Five votes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. We look forward to working with y'all.
Yes, sir. All right, discussing appropriate approve advertising for bid for three new fleet vehicles, Dodge pickup trucks, to include in our, we would like to get the process started.
Have to get approval to bid, to advertise, to get to bids. New fleet vehicles, Dodge pickup trucks, to include in our, we would like to get the process started. Have to get approval to bid, to advertise, to get to bids. And they're already, the money is already there in the budget.
You're saying for approval to advertise for the Commissioner's Court?
I make a motion?
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and Secretary of Justice, that we approve the advertisement for bid for three new fleet vehicles for the Sheriff's Department, and he specified it to be a Dodge truck. Any discussion? All in favor? Five votes.
Thank you, Judge. Congratulations.
Thank you. Number 10, discussing consider award to construction contract to lead a bin for apartment standby generators for TDM HMG PDR 4332 dash O121 and vertical voluntary for apartment standby generator. Under, uh, it's HGM GPD R 4332 dash 10186. Mr. Pat?
The county, we opened bids last week for these two standby generators on the vision of emergency management hazard mitigation program. We had 18 different contractors that had looked at the project, but one won the prize. Mint Electric from Jasper. Their total bid for both generators was 116,066. And that's what we recommend y'all award this morning is the contract for both generators. One thing he did provide was an alternative to putting automatic transfer switches in lieu of the manual. And if you put those in, his contract would go up to 121,066. You have 122,400 in your budget. So it will still be in your budget if you want that to go. What we recommend today would be the award to Mint Electric for the base bid on both the generators. the generators, uh, with a total bid of a hundred and sixteen thousand sixty-six dollars.
You recommend a hundred and six, sixteen? Pardon?
We recommend awarding the contract to them for that amount, based on their bids.
The automatic transfer switches were not in the scope of work?
No, the original scope of work was manual transfer switches.
We fixed that, it's fixed.
Uh-huh.
It's fixed. He added to it, one twenty-one.
What, what we're recommending, what we're recommending to do is award the contract instead, we then we would do a change order for the additional, uh, it would be right at four, well, it'd be forty-five hundred dollars for both combined, uh, which is what we would do shortly after getting contracts.
All right, hear your motion?
I make the motion.
For the bid. Motion been made by Mr. Benson and the second by Mr. Thompson that we award a, the bid, uh, to Mint Electric for the construction of, of the generators at the Toledo bin and at, uh, Bertville, uh, for six, one sixteen oh sixty-six. Uh, in, is, not all in favor? Five votes.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Uh, as usual, we're going to lump eleven, twelve, and thirteen unless otherwise specified through the motion that we, uh, extend our declaration to June the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one for COVID nineteen and, uh, hurricane Laura and winter weather disaster.
So move? Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Pombi and second by Mr. White that we extend our, uh, disaster decorations, uh, until June the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one for COVID, uh, nineteen, uh, hurricane Laura and winter weather disaster. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five votes. Okay, number fourteen is to pay the bills, Mr. Eric. Oui.
General fund, five hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. District attorney state fund, two thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-two cents. Road and bridge general, fifty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Road and bridge precinct one, a hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-one cents. Road and bridge precinct two, thirty-four thousand sixty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. Road and bridge precinct three, seventy-two thousand two hundred and five dollars and forty-seven cents. Road and bridge precinct four, twenty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. Courthouse security, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. VAW grant, five thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. Commissioner's special precinct one, nineteen thousand five eighty-eight thirteen. Commissioner's special precinct two, seventy thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-one cents. Commissioner's special precinct three, seventy-five thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and four cents. Commissioner's special precinct four, seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety cents. Record preservation, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. Sheriff's contraband, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Solid waste disposal, thirty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eight cents. Voter registration, four thousand fifty-four dollars and eleven cents. Newton County library, fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars and ten cents. Historical cooperation, four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-six cents. Records management, one thousand three hundred and eleven dollars and ten cents. Hazard mitigation grant, thirty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. FEMA grant, ten thousand sixty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. Grant, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. State fee account, sixty-three thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. Technology fund, three hundred and eighty dollars and twelve cents, for a total of one million eight hundred and ninety thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Thank you, Mr. Briles.
Yes, sir. Oh.
Any question?
How much say I had on road and bridge?
Road and bridge commissioner, I mean precinct one, a hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-one cents.
That don't sound right.
What is this?
Okay, I checked my record.
Your motion? Make a motion, we please.
You got it, man.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Pombi, we pay the bills, all in favor? Five votes. Your motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and second by Mr. Thompson. Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and second by Mr. Pombi, adjourn, five minutes to eleven. All in favor?
I count your road ten.